Good afternoon, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Finance Subcommittee for Monday, September 23rd, 2019 to order. Members Secretaries, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Coogan?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Martins?
Here.
Would you all please join me in the salute to our flag?
................................................
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. This afternoon before the Subcommittee, a number of agenda items. First is a discussion on the MOU, the Shared Indirect Cost Agreement between four Republic Schools and the City of Fall River. At this time, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Dr. Malone.
The, uh... This, uh... Share Cost Agreement is a living document that we entered into agreement two years ago. I believe that the item itself was requested that we look at it and then go back and revisit it with the city as some conclusions that could be made on our end of indirect costs.
So, one of the documents that I had asked for, actually, here it is here. Members in the right side of your folder. I want to thank Mr. Almeida for putting it in there for us, but I had asked for a breakdown on the total dollar amount received in each fiscal year going back to 2010 that the city receives. In the current indirect cost agreement, we have to hit a cap of, I believe it's $2 million in order to... For there to be a split from the reimbursement received. And only until we hit that $2 million cap does the school committee stand in line for any reimbursement of that Medicaid money. And I had asked to go back to 2010 because I couldn't recall the year where we... The city was reimbursed $2 million. And as I'm looking at it now, it's pretty clear there hasn't been a split except for 2017 where the city fell just shy of $2 million in reimbursement. And it looks like the 10-year average is about 1.4 million dollars on average, so... So, I've been a part of now two indirect cost agreements. One, the original one, and then the one that was renegotiated in 2017. I think the only concern that I have about the document as it stands right now is that particular item. The others, you know, I think there was some give and take in that process in 2017. I think there were some things that certainly benefited the school department having language changed and that there were some other items that I think benefited the city to have changed. And so, I think overall, it's a decent document. However, I will say that, you know, as far as the Medicaid reimbursement, I think the committee, I'll let my colleagues, you know, certainly ultimately decide, but should probably reconsider that portion of the indirect agreement because as it stands now, it doesn't look like, you know, we're coming close to a $2 million reimbursement in the last 10 years. In fact, we've never hit $2 million in reimbursement. So, the provision in there that we get 50% of whatever's over $2 million certainly doesn't look like it will ever occur or has occurred in the last 10 years, so... Outside of that, my comments, you know, would be directly towards that particular item and whether or not the committee feels it wants to address the SROs in this indirect cost agreement and how that is outlined.
It's more language than what SROs now are, right?
Uh, no.
Because we're separate.
We pay for it directly.
We pay for it directly. However, at one point, the city had paid for it.
Right.
And so, it was charged towards their indirect cost. And then it's, I believe it was in 2009 or 2010 maybe? I think Bob, Mayor Correa was in office at the time. I believe there was a shift or a partial shift and then eventually a full shift to the school department picking up the cost of all the SROs. So, again, if that's something the committee wishes to have a discussion with the city about...
Could I just make just a couple, just a couple general comments? So, this agreement compared to the other one, to the older agreement, I believe, is, as far as a give and take, it works, it's good for the city, it's good for the school department. I don't see that there's any like crazy variation here. What I do like about the new agreement is that it outlines the costs and it tells you exactly what is charged, what's not charged, so that you, that it's pretty clear. The only thing that I think we may want to revisit, because I've read through it more this weekend, you know, based on, since it's been in agreement, is maybe cleaning up like stuff around the legal and law department and how... And just specifically say how those things get charged, you know, and how it affects us more so than like general language. So, I think that might be an area we might want to look at, but other than that, I think it is a pretty good agreement.
Mr. Martin will open up for questions?
The swing from like 2010 to 2011 of $800,000, Kevin, what happens?
It's honestly like just federal law changes.
That was a law change?
So, it changed drastically that year and, as you see, it starts to pick up a little bit and it goes back in the other direction, the other way. And it's, I hate to say it's, if you're on top of it, you've really got to be on top of it because they do what's called the Random Moment of Time Study, you know, through the whole Medicaid process. And if you don't get everybody to do the survey essentially, we lose a lot of money that way. So, we've done over the last several years, we have one clerk in particular does a really good job of staying on top of people to make sure they get the surveys done so that we get the maximum reimbursement that we're able to get, so...
It's always been a bone of contention, you know, we go back and forth on this every year. We do all the work and they get all the money, so maybe the chairman is thinking we'll move the bar down a little bit, so at least we got a crack at it. But right now, we're really not even in the game, so we'll have to adjust that, maybe we'll see, but I can see by the numbers that that's all over the place.
It is. It is.
Mr. Martin?
First off, the Medicare reimbursement, that's from the students contacting them as far as what their status is.
Yes.
In there?
Yes.
And that we do all that?
We do on our side, yes.
You mentioned that there's something that you like about a, an agreement. I see one for 2017.
And then you have the old one there.
But you indicated that it's itemized. Where is it itemized?
Right in the back of this agreement, Mr. Martin.
I'm sorry?
This agreement here?
In the new one, 2017.
In the new one? It's in the back.
2017?
Yep. That's the newest one.
Oh, this is the newest one?
It is, yeah. We, I, so I wanted to give you both agreements, the most two recent ones, so that you could compare the two and take a look at it. But in the back of that second document, it lists what's charged and what's not.
I understand. The, um... You don't have any idea as to the, obviously, we don't come anywhere near the $2 million.
No.
So, we get zip.
Yes.
You don't know where the city expends that money?
No. They can spend it on...
They please, okay? They could pay for SROs from it.
Potentially, yes.
You don't know if that's the case.
Potentially.
Do you... What would be the cost of the total cost of SROs that we need?
The total cost is about $550,000.
$550,000?
$550,000.
For all SROs?
Except for the seven SROs that we pay.
First off, I'm at a disadvantage in that obviously you know that I'm hard of hearing, okay? And some of your voices are rather low, so it's difficult for me to hear.
Sure.
Okay? That's a disability that I have. I guess is it... This is something that the Medicare reimbursement, something that the school department does for all of that money? And then it's basically given over to the city?
Yes.
I understand currently the SROs are a city expense?
The SROs are charged directly to our budget.
Okay, so it's a school department budget?
Yes.
Budget item?
Yes, sir.
Of which case now, um... Would it be prudent to have a request that, hey, look? The police department is there to respond to emergencies and if there's an emergency, if we, if there were no SROs, then we'd be calling the police department quite frequently for various issues, which they are obligated to respond to. So, it's certainly nice to, uh... Help in reducing that cost to the city. I guess what I'm driving at is that the, this is the latest one, but yet is this one here, indirect cost agreement, certain municipal expenses, is this a proposed one?
No. So, I just wanted to give you for reference, I wanted to give you the two agreements. The one that's on this side here is the newest, is the newest one.
And when did this one come out?
That is the old one. That one was the one that was in place in fiscal 2010.
2010?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Well, then I guess they, would it then be prudent to say, hey, look, how about lowering that and going on, and I think the chair mentioned it on a 50-50 basis all the way down the line to be able to say, okay, you're not really doing anything for this. School department is doing it, is generating at an average of about 1.5 million dollars. And that, if we split this on a 50-50 basis, then that would be about $700,000. Then that would pay for the, uh... Pay for the SROs. Would that not be something that's feasible?
Definitely could. It's all negotiation, so I mean, we would go back and request to, um... Negotiate with the city administrator or the mayor and the, um...
And the CFO.
And the CFO and throw that on the table and see where it goes.
Well, I understand that, but I'm not making a motion to do that as far as having it 50-50 because it is a negotiating process in there. But I highly recommend that such discussion take place. If this is 2010 and this is 2017, then this is two years old and I think it's time to update it.
Absolutely.
And that I could make a motion to, uh, enter, you know, explore the feasibility of making changes to the 2017 to update it.
So, I think what I'll do is, let's have some further discussion on it and then if there are motions to be made, let's take those. I think those motions would come in a form of giving the guidance ultimately to the full committee and then eventually to the superintendent to go and negotiate, but we can have a list of different scenarios, of different requests. You know, with the Medicaid reimbursement, my preference would be, because I know the city's going to say, well, we use that money towards, you know, education and transportation or in some form or another. And that may be, that may be true. What I would say is I would set it so that there's a trigger that goes into effect where if the city commits over 100%, and not only commits, but also funds a school at over 100% of that school spending, then some of that reimbursement go directly to them. If they don't, then I think there should be some, you know, if their funding is at 100% and yet we're doing all the work and they're still getting this money and only giving us what's minimally required, then I think that there should be some language in it to suggest that at times when they fund is at 100%, we should get a, whether it's 50% of the Medicaid reimbursement or some other percent of it. And then if they're committing more funds to the district, then, you know, maybe in the interest of playing fair, that Medicaid reimbursement goes to them because they are expending more than the, than the law requires. That's one, that's one potential, I'm not saying it needs to be the only one, but there could be others. It could be straight up, if you get a million or more, you know, it's 50-50. It could be simply just straight 50-50. It could be whatever the committee, you know, feels is appropriate. Mr. Martin, you want to add something?
Yeah, one thing, you know, the city is obligated to meet its minimum contribution here with it. Well, this is lowering that minimum contribution. You just gave you 1.5 million dollars, of which case, without that, if we did zip, we didn't do that, we didn't do all the student contact, then that wouldn't be there. Still have to come up with the minimum school spending, I mean, the assessment to, of which case, but now that's here. So, therefore, now that's money being given to you. So, in reality, you just lowered the amount of money that, to meet the local contribution thereby, I don't know.
My point was that in years where they've expended more than what's required by law, one could make the argument that the money that they're generating from this, they are giving back towards anyway.
Absolutely.
I'm just saying, if that's the case, fine, then maybe there should be a language that triggers additional Medicaid money coming to the district, to the school department. But if they meet the minimum, then I think there should be a trigger. If they're getting a 1.5 million dollars on average, 1.5 million dollars in Medicaid reimbursement and they're only expending what's minimally required, then I think the argument should be that that money should be used to assist us increasing, in increasing educational funding. And that's just my position or my initial thought on it, but again, if members think that it should be 50-50 split, members think it should be, I think we should have different options so that we can have those discussions and maybe come to some middle ground with the administration on it because it is a lot of money. The school department definitely does the work to generate it and at this point, unless it hits a $2 million reimbursement, there's no chance of the school department getting any percentage of it, so... And as we can see, there has been a year where that's happened, so... As far as the SROs, you know... Maybe there's something in the agreement that talks about some of the reimbursement being used to compensate for a number of the SROs. So, we're not on the hook for all of the SROs and their salaries and benefits. Maybe there's a split, but I think there's options here available to discuss. You said it was $550,000?
$550,000.
So, you know, maybe there's an opportunity there to look at a negotiation process where the Medicaid reimbursement is whatever it is that year and minus the $550,000 for the SRO salaries. And so, that fund will actually, the Medicaid reimbursement will actually fund SROs. So, I think there's a, there's a number of different scenarios I think that could play out that would, I think, assist both sides.
I also think though, at this time, I mean, obviously that cap was set way too high at $2 million, but at this time, the schools are in a very good financial situation relative to the city. I don't, I never liked the fact that we have to do all the work to get this money and I would even like it if there was somehow we could get reimbursed for the time alone, which would be good. But I don't have a problem with adjusting, I just know that at this time, we're in really good shape and the $2 million cap was something that was set, that was unrealistic, we never hit that, so, let's see how it plays out.
And that's why I tied it to the net school spending number.
Yeah, absolutely. If they go over...
Because if they go over, then, and they have proposed that we have gone over on net school spending, then they're making an honest effort to fund us higher than what the law requires, then I don't think we should be necessarily causing an issue about getting reimbursed. However, when they're saying here's the minimum, yet they're still taking in 1.4, 1.6, or 1.9 million dollars in revenue that was generated from the school department, I think it's fair at that point to say a percentage of that should come over so that we can increase, you know, the money we have for educational needs. So, how that language plays out or how that would look, you know, I'd certainly be willing to either assist in crafting that or sit down and discuss that further, but I think it's clear that we had one document that was in effect for, since 2010. And just by way of some history, that document was crafted because prior to that, there really wasn't a breakdown on indirects and there was no agreement or understanding of how the school department was charged, the city was charging off its indirects to the school department. And so, in 2010, myself, Mr. Kadim, and I can't remember who, I think it was Mr. McCoy at the time that was on the committee, had Jay Sullivan from the Department of Elementary and Secondary had come down, gave us some advice on, you know, what a framework for an agreement would look like. And we put this together, stayed in effect until 2017. But it certainly needed to be cleaned up at one time and we did, and that's why we came up with 2017 document. But I think that going forward, it's a good document, but there is some room for some changes, so... Any further discussion on the MOU? If not, entertain a motion to, um... Refer this back to the full committee with some recommendations with respect to at least those two items. The indirect cost, I mean, excuse me, Medicaid reimbursement. And also to take a look at the SROs and how those are funded.
Can you put a third one? The legal billing?
Oh, I'm sorry, and also the legal and how that's, the legal expenses and how that's charged on.
Before we take a vote on that, a question that is of finance. Where does the charter school tuition reimbursement go?
Where does it go?
Yes.
It's a, it's a pass, so it comes to us, so everything comes, the revenue piece comes to us, the expense piece goes directly to the charter schools.
No, that's the expense, but you get reimbursed for charter school.
Yeah.
Okay. Where does that reimbursement go?
City gets it.
I'm sorry?
The city, the city gets it.
The city gets it?
Yes.
Okay. So, the city is going for FY 2020, city is going to get $4 million. Okay. Just because there's a charter school, right? The expense of the charter school, yeah, it comes, you know, it goes directly from the Department of Ed to them, but as far as accounting is concerned, it goes through here, just so that the Department of Ed will know how much it actually costs to educate students in Fall River.
Correct.
So, that's the public schools, well, and also the charter schools, which is a public school. So, there, you know, between the two of those is what the Department of Education is here. Now, I know how much the total cost for educating a student is, but by virtue of the fact that there are some students going to the charter schools, the city is getting reimbursed 4.4 million dollars for 2020, right? That doesn't lower the Chapter 78 and it doesn't lower the net school spending.
No.
They're still there. And if this is at the act reg, this is the latest one that I have, of Chapter 78 is 130, well, almost 131 million and the net school spending, 162 million in there. Now, you have the charter school reimbursement of $4 million plus the Medicare reimbursement going to the city of Fall River, which I think is okay, fine. Well, decreasing your costs for education. You still have to come up with the money for that minimum contribution, but we're helping you by reducing or giving you additional monies. The charter school monies and the, uh, this, the Medicare monies. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, is there a motion on the floor to refer back to the full committee with some recommendations from the administration and Superintendent Mr. Almeida, some recommendations regarding those three areas for the committee's consideration at a future meeting? Is there a motion that was made by Mr. Coogan? Is there a second?
A second.
A second, Mr. Martin?
Sure. I think one of the suggestions to strongly consider a 50-50 arrangement on the Medicare.
Right, so what I, the motion would allow both Dr. Malone and Mr. Almeida to sit down, come up with a number of scenarios for the committee's consideration and then the full committee can hear different options and take votes on whether it wants to be a 50-50 or whether it wants to be all or nothing, if it wants to have a trigger where if they meet a certain percentage of net school spending, then we don't get any of it, but we'll, and that will all, all those recommendations or suggestions will come back to the full committee before any negotiations will commence. We clear on that? Good color? Does that cover? Does that cover?
Yeah.
So, there was a motion made by Mr. Coogan, it was seconded by Mr. Martins. Any further discussion on that motion? Here or none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, go ahead, you may answer. Thank you. The next item is the discussion on principal and 12-month executive director salary ranges. This time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Malone.
So, this item is an item that we had originally discussed in July. It's a full committee. At that time, you did, the committee did give me leeway around the principal salaries and ranges, but we discussed that we wanted to develop a model that's a little more sophisticated and in-depth about how principals are paid based on school size and special program, et cetera, et cetera. So, we're here tonight not to take a vote on any action yet, but to share with the committee, the Subcommittee, our intent, our vision to develop something that's more in line around the average of the state. And with that, we've created several documents for you, elementary, middle, and high school salary scope and range. Pretty impressive that, you know, we're able to, through District, the state listserv, be able to get a whole bunch of other districts. And then concurrent with that, we also were able to get Boston's rate as well. I know, I know, they're probably the highest, you know, but it's, I just wanted to give the committee a full taste of what the, what the scope and range is across the Commonwealth. We're below the state average in all areas and that's fine, but all I was looking for and would like to do is, when we think about the ranges, create something that I don't have to keep coming back with every year or two. Although, you know, everyone's within range right now, there's been no one outside of range during my tenure here. And, you know, if the committee would allow us to be a little more sophisticated in how we work this out, we go back and we develop something along the lines of what you guys have, was the folded one?
Should be the big one left there.
It's on that one.
On this one?
Yep.
So, this is an example of what Brockton's doing and they have a base salary for principals, but then there's, there's incentive around special programming, school size, earned doctorate, et cetera. And this, in this model, this matrix, they call it the, uh... And this, in this model, this matrix, they call it the, you have a base salary, you don't get a stipend. It's all part of your salary. But all those factors are taken into consideration when negotiating with principals.
And so just, just wrote before, before questions. So the pages that you have flipped up there, Mr. Costa?
Mm-hmm.
It's, and I'm sorry I didn't label them, but it's elementary, middle, and high. That's the most updated information off the Masbo listserv. It provides you with enrollment numbers for each one, and it gives you what the salary is for those that responded. Not everybody responded. I wish I could have gotten more data. But and also what I did was, in FY 20 for the current year, I sorted it from smallest to highest so you could see, you know, the varying degrees of salary and see what the enrollment figures look like for each one.
Any questions? Mr. Almeida?
Yeah. What are we below the average with, I mean, all these numbers? I look at our old salary ranges. How much are we off the state average?
We're about $5,000 less. So if you look at the FERC document, am I saying that right, Kevin? So if you look at this document, you can see what our current range was. Now, I proposed moving higher. You guys gave me, remember the vote on that? It was approved just the principals. That's all we talked about.
Correct. Just the principals.
And we referred the rest back. But we're still below the median. So for example, our new range for elementary is 100 to 115, whereas statewide, the average salary for elementary principals is almost 1,000, I mean, almost 116,000. Same for middle school, high school. High school was fine. The range at the high school is fine. But it was the elementary that, and I gotta be honest with you. I'm having a little bit of a hard time contracting with some folks when we're recruiting for elementary school principal shifts because the market is pretty competitive. And we're below the rate. So if the committee would allow, what we would do is we would go back, work on a proposal, and bring it back to the finance subcommittee for further discussion, which, which we didn't want to do tonight because we've been working on a lot of stuff. But we're in no rush right now. It's just that this is, this could take a couple of months of really, you know, steady work for us.
All right. Look, the only thing that does stand out with the elementary system is the range in size from Watson to Viveras.
Right.
Those are like two schools compared to one. I know. And we have no adjustments for that at all, do we?
No.
That impacts everything, evaluations, hiring, right down the line.
Right.
All right. I mean, if you look at the state average, you can't be below it. You're competing against some of these small towns, you know?
You know, the good news is, we've been able to, longevity, you know, people stay, right? So we've been able to keep people here. They're not getting, you know, stolen, but it's like, you know, for example, competing, like when we hired Ms. Luca at Green this year, she wanted to come do this job. So that, when you looked at what her salary was before compared to what we were offering, it was quite a bit of difference.
She took a big cut.
Yeah, it's a little bit of a cut. But she wanted to do elementary. She's never done that. So, and she wanted to come here, which is, which is good. I mean, I think our people overall are, some of the best there are. And I think they're happy. But at the same time, as more jobs open up, I want to be able to continue to attract the best talent and also even grow within. That was the other thing. We wanted to do, and we will, a real analysis of what VPs, you know, are making compared to principals. And that's one of the, I mean, you know, this, one of the real challenges we have are folks leaving the VP role to go do this 12-month job because, you know, it's not much more money for a lot more time.
Mr. Martin? This looks like about a 5% increase. About right?
Yeah, it's about 5%.
Roughly, yeah.
Remember, what we're, we, just because it says what the, you know, I'm not asking to give people raises. I'm saying that what is the range we can live in when we contract?
Okay, I understand that. But this range is for initial hiring?
I, no.
Not so?
No. I have to stay within the ranges for the length of their employment.
The range of their employment?
Yeah. I can't have principals outside of the salary range.
Right. Oh, I understand. But a new elementary principal to the district, wherever that person may come from. But you can hire that individual between 100,000 and 115,000.
Yes.
Okay. Likewise, all the way down the line.
Yes.
So that's the range of hiring?
Well, but also each year, if the school committee allows me to go up to 2% for raises, I'd do that and, you know, I'd do it within, but it's gotta be within that figure. I can only go outside that figure if I come back to the committee and have permission.
If you were to hire someone, let's say there's a superstar out there for an elementary principal, you're hiring at 150,000. What happens at the end of one year?
They'd be capped.
They're gonna be capped at 150?
Yeah.
All right. So that, this being the, that's capped at that particular value. If they're less than that, then they get basically what is negotiated for any other group?
Yeah, to, well, yes, to a certain point.
Based on performance.
Okay. What's the, what's the certain point?
You know, I asked the committee this last year for 2%.
2%. 2%, okay. So what, normally, it would be, you know, whatever the FRAA would be getting as far as negotiation.
Yes and no. Something, a couple of times, you know, we were 1%. We were less than, you know, and the teachers unions the last couple of years were very helpful to the district. They came in low, so. But you're, you know, you're probably making a pretty accurate statement with what the union's got.
All right. So in essence, then, this is a proposal for increasing the entry salary range, which is approximately 5% from here. And that whatever range that the individual is hired at, then as the time goes on, you get a, an additional, whatever is negotiated approximately for other unions in addition. So I can understand, at least for the time that I'm here. Thank you very much. Are you?
So I'll say this. I think the ranges that you've given us, the percentage, obviously is only based on the information you have.
Correct.
So to the extent there are other districts out there that are paying less than we are, we don't know because they're not reporting it. And there may be some others that are reporting higher. Again, we don't know because it's not reported. But based on what we know, we're just under what the average is for the state, you know, based on the available data that we have. I'm not opposed to a metric that resembles or looks similar to this. Because I think that in the issue of fairness, you know, if you got a school, as Mr. Coogan brings up, Watson or Viveras, and there's three times as many students at one of these other elementary schools than there is in a single unit or a double unit school. Those two principals are showing up, working the entire week, and they're both getting the same amount, possibly, or similar. Or they're both within the same range available for salaries. Where I think this gives a little more latitude in terms of, you know, different populations, school size, ELT. There's a number of different things. ASD, in ASD or ASD classrooms in the, right, in the school, it's a different amount of money that's attributed to that. You know, I think population should be looked at. However, I don't know if that should be the only driving factor. Because the question then becomes, if we're basing on a certain amount of students and there aren't that many students the following year, does that principal then give back some of their salaries?
True.
We have a dramatic decrease in population, and it was set at a certain amount. All of a sudden, now my school population mirrors the one down the road, and they're making less. Do I now give up a portion of my salary? So I don't know that I would base it solely on that. But I think it should be a factor, should be a consideration that's given. You know, I don't know what my colleagues, you know, feel, but I think something similar to this, a consideration we brought back. Find the subcommittee, take a look at it, see what it would look like in terms of dollar amount. I think is appropriate. And I make that statement regarding school population for two reasons. One, to point out that our populations do fluctuate. And I also point it out because if I'm a teacher and I say, okay, well, now I want to get paid based on the number of students you put in my classroom, that also too could fluctuate. And I know theirs is contractual, but, so I wouldn't leave it solely on that piece. I want to make that clear. Because I don't want to be a misconstrued that because it's a certain population, they get paid a certain amount. Because I can foresee, you know, Rebecca and, you know, her cohorts, and rightfully so, coming back saying, if you're gonna base their salaries on the number of students in their building, well, those are my teachers teaching them. And therefore, if we have more than 25 or 30 students, we're looking for X percentage more as well. But I think it should be a factor that's considered. Mr. Martins, Mr. Coogan, are you okay with? I don't think it's a motion needed, but I think just some guidance for the administration to bring back a matrix that's similar in this.
Yeah, we have to be competitive. And I mean, you look at the school size bump that is, that is being used by Brockton is $20 a week. It's not like they're giving away the store there. And some of the others are even $10 a week or something. So again, I don't have, I don't have a problem with that. I just, and obviously, we're not trying to penalize people that have smaller schools, but we're acknowledging that there is a little bit of difference. Of course, with subs, parents, everything, so. But I don't have a problem with them adjusting ranges. Bring it to the whole committee, obviously.
Right. But in this particular format? I think, I only suggest that because I think it spells out very specifically for people who are looking or wondering, where did we come up with that dollar amount? As opposed to just saying, well, the average is X, so we want to be within that range. I think spelling out for anybody who wants to see exactly what that breakdown looks like and why a particular school may get paid or salary range for a particular school may be higher than another, it's based on these factors. And these are the dollar amounts that are attributed to those. So I think in the issue of transparency, if I'm not familiar with the district and I'm wondering, well, why is the salary range for the school I'm applying for less than one across the city? Well, I could be handed this and understand clearly, okay, that's why. They have a bilingual strand. They have an ASD strand. They have early intervention there. They have whatever the case may be.
800 kids.
800 kids. So it would be clear to me, looking at it at that point, why the salary range is higher at some of those schools than it would be for, you know, a two-unit school that doesn't have some of those extras.
We would come back to this group with taking a shot at something like that. So we don't know if it would come out with all those, but we can get some ideas that we've been kicking around. So that's what I want to see.
And I'm not saying there needs to be a dollar value assigned to all of these particular subgroups.
Right.
But in the cases where there are bigger schools, where they are, these special programs are there, then, you know, maybe there would be a dollar amount or a consideration given to that. I'd feel better about something like this than to just keep giving you, as a superintendent, cock launch to say, okay, I wanted, you give, you know, the committee to give me the authorization to increase the range by 5,000 or 10,000 every year.
Right.
You know, the reality is that some people are maxed out in this proposal. And that unfortunately is the reality in other places as well. That whether it's contractual or not, you get to your step raise. You sit at that step raise or that lane until you retire, unless it's negotiated to add, you know, additional steps. If not, you know, depending on how fast you went up the ladder, determines what your salary will be unless you get a cost of living each year that's negotiated. So, but I, I think that's, unless there's objection to it, I think that's the direction I would urge Superintendent Mr. Almeida to put something together that mirrors this matrix that's more in line with Fall River and have us take a look at it and.
Put a few less columns, too. I mean, really, I mean.
Keep it simple. Exactly. And I mean, I see like life skills and stuff.
I know about that.
You know, but, but there's something to be said about ASD, early intervention. If you got pre-K, bilingual strands, you know, percentage of special needs students in your building, you know, again.
One of the things that, the committee doesn't even know, we want to get onto a document, is also like, what does ELT mean?
Right. Absolutely.
You know what I mean? Because we've had agreements for however long we've been here.
2007, 2008.
And we've taken that percentage. And so now, because we do 20 minutes, 30 minutes, 60 minutes, and 90. So not everyone gets the same.
Right. So this would formalize that?
Right. Right.
To some extent, so. Yeah, and if you're, if you're saying to this committee that it's not something that you need to rush into, I don't know that you have negotiations going on with any of these others, but.
Yeah.
We can always come back and discuss that at a later date.
Yep.
Mr. Martin, anything else that you'd like to add to that discussion piece on?
No, but I, well, I'll hold up some of the general meeting.
Okay. Mr. Coogan, anything further?
Lots of this.
Okay. So Superintendent or Mr. Almeida, anything?
Nope. Nope.
Need any clarity on anything clear?
Nope.
So the next item is the discussion on the expenditure of the, now less than 1 million Employee Trust Fund appropriations for the schools. As the committee's aware, the full body took a vote to expend some of those funds for pace renovations and improvements. So I believe, do we have an updated document?
Yes.
Yes.
So the updated document now is 700 and?
750.
$50,000 of proposed spending for the committee's consideration. Give members a quick minute just to take a look at that information.
You can see we changed the line item on the minivans. So we're gonna look at the SUV minivan option for the attendance that we talked about at the full.
For the attendance officer. Mr. Martin, just so, I, I'm not sure how much of the last meeting you caught or may not have caught, but at the last meeting, there was an approval of an attendance officer, additional attendance officer position.
Yes.
With that came a broader discussion about the role of an attendance officer and their abilities under the law to actually go out to the home. And if a child's there and they're, then not, you know, excused from being absent, that the attendance officer would then, you know, potentially transport that child back to the school. So there was discussions about use of funds to possibly purchase either 7D vans or other vehicles so that they're not putting these students in their personal vehicle and doing that, that work. So just so that, if you had missed that piece, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
All right. Thank you. However, there is some legal issues involved in there when the attendance officer goes in to a home. And, wait a minute. That student doesn't look sick to me. Yeah, how come the student is not in school? Well, I'm gonna take that student. Oh, you're not? Because in fact, you don't have the legal authority to do so.
They're not gonna take any students.
No. My, my understanding is, they have the authority, I believe, under the general law to, if they identify a student as being chronically absent, I think there's a provision in the law that allows them to transport. However, I'm not. However, I'm not so sure that we want to get into, we'd have to obviously vet that more closely, but I think going in and.
The first step is you have to go to contact the police and say, okay, now this student is not going to school, chronically absent, and the parents aren't doing anything, but you can't take that kid. And the parents say, hey, you're not taking my child. Hey, you have to get a police officer.
Right, because then it becomes a custody issue and then you're assuming custody of that individual.
Absolutely so.
You'd have to have a protective reason.
But it's not as simple as getting a car kit, doesn't work that way.
No. But you, but when you meet a reluctant parent like that, you tell them as you go back to your office, you will be filing on them a truancy.
Oh, absolutely.
And then that we will follow up with the police and have a nice day. But you can't take a kid, I agree with you there. In a way, we're taking a kid. But you do follow up right away so they know the severity of what we're talking about.
And then that initiates a court order.
Absolutely. But that's different, we're not taking any kids, I agree with you there, holy moly. That scares me. I do have to say something though about the list. I had a opportunity today to go to Talbot and they have their new outdoor basketball court there. The principal explained to me when he pulls up in the morning, it's six forty-five, there's already ten kids a day out there playing ball, getting ready for school. I got to tour the front lobby, which if you guys get a chance to go through that, it's absolutely spectacular now with the floor redone. And then I finally got down to the gym. It's a proud anchor for that school, that gym is, is beautiful. And I do think, I don't know what we're going to do, I know Bay Coast threw a substantial amount of money in there. I would like to see us do a little dedication for that, so people can go through it from the community. It's that pretty. I mean, we can use a back door or something, Kenny, so they don't have to go through the whole building. But on a Saturday morning or something before a game, have an open house for a half hour. Dedicate that gym because I worked in that school and through your vision or wherever that came from, that gym is gorgeous now. New bleachers, new floor, all painted, and it's a, it's a proud testament to the forward progress of schools to bring that to them. Ken and his team have done a great job with Talbot right now. And, you know, the next phase for us is we're going to do a whole, make it, use the, the right-hand side door, main door. That will become the new main door. And, and Brian's going to be moving his office around, the, the school is just, it's, it's already feeling different.
What I'm saying that for is because if you look at a lot of the things on this list, those are all type of culture and climate type things that bring people back to our schools and see that we're being serious about making, educating the whole student, and I do, I don't, you know. Henry Lord needs a basketball court to let them have one and Stone kids obviously need one, they have, they're short down there, so. But I, I was just so impressed with how Talbot came out and I congratulated whoever drove that because that thing really moved. It looks really nice down there.
That's good to hear, I mean, as a student at Talbot, I'd like to take some credit for tearing that floor up, but I wasn't the case, I wasn't.
Broke the backboard.
I didn't necessarily have that basketball acumen, so I can't take credit for tearing that up back in the day, but I'm glad it's in good shape now for all those aspiring basketball athletes down there and all students, not just basketball, because phys ed and everything is, is going on in there. But I have heard some, some positive feedback about the work, not just at Talbot, but at Watson, at Tansy, and some of the other schools that we've been working on. Ken, thank you for leading that, that charge, both with MSBA funds, with some local dollars, with some capital improvement money from the city, you know. I won't go off on a tangent about, you know, capital maintenance is, is important to these buildings and, and we often refer to some of these schools as, you know, the new Henry Lord or the new this. The reality is that we don't have many new schools anymore. Most of the schools are, got quite a few years under their belts, believe it or not. And so we have to keep up with them and to the extent we can do it with the, the funds that we've had and with the partnership with the MSBA, that's all, you know, good stuff. And so I don't have any objections to any of the money. I had particularly asked that it would be referred back to the subcommittee because it came to the full committee. I'm not sure anybody at the, at that time was prepared to discuss each one of those items, but if anybody here has any, you know, thing that they'd like to see changed, added, you know, certainly, you know, discuss that now. Mr. Martins?
Two questions. Professional, right at the bottom, professional development for special education staff. Does that include the paraprof, the paraprofessions? It includes the P D O?
Yes. That was a big one.
That was the big one, yeah.
And what is purchase a lobby guard?
What's that? It's a badge system, so basically when, when people visit Durfee, they'll be entered into a system using their ID, their driver's license or whatever ID, they'd be issued a badge as they come in and that would give us a record of everything going on. We currently don't do that, we issue a visitor's pass. We don't have the technology at Durfee that would allow us to do that. So this would be, and, and this again is a pilot, this would be something that we would like to institute everywhere, eventually, but at the high school level, it's very important because the high school sees more outside and, and outside people coming into that building than any of us.
And the badge says visitor or something?
The badge would have their picture on it.
Yeah, it's also a little more than that, Mr. Martins. Someone comes in the building that shouldn't be there because of some legal matter, that comes up.
It triggers.
Brockton has the lobby guard, we got it after we had that, that shooting in two thousand nine. And they put, I mean, they're huge, forty-two hundred kids and they, but it, it works like a charm.
I think they have, at the Boston Children's Hospital, I think they have similar to that. You present your ID, get scanned into the system and then it produces a sticker, but your fail, your photo is on it.
Yeah.
With your name, where you're going, and all that information gets uploaded.
That, are you, I'm sure you're familiar with, with diamonds.
The diamond system. It's similar, this one is a little more robust than diamonds.
No further questions?
Is there a motion to refer the proposed expenditure for the seven hundred fifty thousand dollars back to full committee? Made by Mr. Coogan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Martins. The only discussion, just quickly, is there, have, have we dedicated any of this funding along the way? And I'm trying to remember prior expenditure, if not, maybe in the future where we can consider it for, you know, the creation or of a middle school fine arts. We have the middle school, school intramurals for students who are athletically inclined, but do we have any?
Plays and stuff?
Right, I know that each school tends to do those, but does that come out of their operating budget or is that money that, that comes from PTOs in order to assist with that or? If we can look at that and then if.
But, but, Mr. Costa, when we talk about the next item?
Yep.
Let's throw that on the table because I'm, I want to share some good news with the committee.
Right, so, so, all right, so we'll get to that, the next one then.
Okay.
But, but my thought was that in addition to bolstering the middle school athletic program?
Yeah.
I know Durfee's had a rich, proud theater program for years, they go out, they win all these awards and, and so to the extent we can sort of replicate that in the, in the middle schools, I don't know if that would require an advisor and I know some schools do different theatrical plays and musicals on their own, but I don't know where that funding comes from, if that's a budgetary item. If not, if we can consider maybe using some of this fund to encourage that, you know, within the schools, sort of a, you know, incentive. But any further discussion on, on the motion? Here or none, we'll call.
Mr. Coogan?
Yep.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes. All right, so the next agenda item as listed is the discussion to expend or expenditure of the Puerto Rico, US Virgin Island Hurricane Relief Funds. We still have nine hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars of those funds that need to be expended. And so.
How much?
Nine hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight.
That's what, that's what's been expended?
No.
No, no, that's what we have to expend.
I'm sorry?
That's what we have to expend. We haven't spent it yet.
That's the total amount.
That's the total amount we have.
Remaining to be expended is like four sixty-nine.
Correct, because there's some items for, for discussion or tonight here. You know, one of the reasons why I had asked that the item we just discussed be referred back here was that, you know, trying to, was approached by, you know, a number of people in the community about what are you doing with that, that money, the health insurance money and explain some of the things we've done, both capital and in the classroom and, you know, as I started thinking about what's the best use for that money, one of the things that came to mind, I spoke with the superintendent about, is that a portion of that money be put aside into a line item and ultimately give the principals from within our sixteen schools an opportunity to write a proposal or a plan on how they would use a percentage of that money to improve their school improvement plans. And so whether it's considered innovation money or mini grant or micro grants, that money would definitely go back into the classrooms in these schools and it would have to be tied to a specific area of the school improvement plan that they were looking to make an impact with. Whether that was to bring back retirees to work, do some interventions with students in math or other areas, whether it was to, you know, purchase a particular program that they would want to use to, to change the curriculum, whether it was to hire someone to come in and do some additional professional development on a particular area that the school was struggling with. It gives the principals an opportunity to advocate for additional funding. It puts the onus on not only the principal, but the teachers, in some cases the ILTs, to get creative about how they would look to spend that money. And, you know, quite frankly, I see the two hundred thousand dollars in here, I think it's a great start. My hope would be that if this was approved and it was used, that down the road, you know, principals could come back in future budget years and explain or show the data and how this money was used to effectuate change within their school and maybe it becomes a budget priority for future fiscal years, so. I think it really tasks principals to be innovative and sort of competitive. My hope is that this will become something where there'll be a lot of thoughtful work put into it. Those proposals will be vetted by superintendent or if he wants to.
Yeah, my team.
Create a, create a team or a panel of individuals to review it. You know, I, I think that would be a good use of that money. I'll turn it over to superintendent if he wants to talk any further on that or any other ones that are on there, then.
I think this, this idea was brilliant. The, this is another example of how I think the school committee members, critical partners in thinking about systematic, systematic improvement, good ideas flow, right? So they, you know, this, this came to me through a conversation with you. And I like this concept, I, we've been struggling with, you know, how do we think about empowering, let's say, you know, costs and say, well, we want to do this and we haven't had that ability. Now with this extra money, we could, we could do something, so. I think, you know, anywhere between, you know, two hundred thousand dollars, sixteen schools, you know, one school could get five thousand, one school could get twenty, it depends on the strength of the proposal. So I think that's a, a great idea. We also put, or recommending to this committee to hold two hundred thousand dollars in contingency, just hold it and wait. Then the next item is something I know that, that you may say, well, tell me why you're recommending this. So Durfee High School is now in the seventh or the sixth percentile.
Seventh.
What we've found is the real problem there is that we haven't been able to move the bottom twenty-five percent of students and most of those students are second language learners. So we, we need help at Durfee and we don't, we have a department head shared with world language. So it's world language and, and, and EL, but it's not working. And there's, there's, that EL department needs to function as a department with direct line oversight and real strong program support, so we're recommending the use of, of, of this money for that position. If it works, we'll budget it in next year's budget, when we bring the budget forward. If it doesn't work, we'll have more conversations, but we got to do something at Durfee in that regard. And then the other two items are playground expensive warden, where we are, the inclusion playground out here and the green school playground, the, the, what do they call it?
Surface.
The surface of the green school playground needs to be done over. And then that leaves this committee with four hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars at your discretion. I think that arts concept is, is brilliant, so I mean, I, I'd say we throw fifty grand in something like that right now and just sit on that.
That arts concept, would that include like stipends like we do, like we do at Durfee? The music club, after school stuff. The problem becomes when some of these extended day schools are already paying the teachers to do that, you're not going to take a stipend for them also on top of it, so they're double.
My, my, yeah, my understanding would be, this would be for beyond what they're contracted.
The regular school, whatever, if it's a long day, they're still going the extra time.
Right.
And, and how many students are there in ELL department at Durfee, you know?
Yeah, so it's, it's above twenty percent of the total population, it's three hundred and more than that.
It's just over three hundred.
Over three hundred kids.
Twenty percent is four hundred kids, there's two thousand kids at Durfee.
Yeah, so, right, so it's three hundred and eighty kids. So it's almost twenty percent.
And how many kids are going to be left in foreign language?
Foreign language stays.
Yeah, but I, I know, but I'm saying if you're taking that responsibility for those teachers of the ELL students off the foreign language teacher who off, of the foreign language department head, how many is she going to have left in her department? I mean, in her evaluations and everything else.
Six of seven, they have six of seven world language teachers.
That's what I'm saying.
They probably have twenty something, ELL teachers.
That, that is a big, that is a big target area at Durfee, I know that we have to do better for those kids.
It's just the one thing that, I mean, Durfee would not be in the seven percentile if we're going to, because they, they approved their attendance and they approved the, the higher, to do enrollment in the AP classes. But what we're getting crushed by is that the bottom twenty-five percent is not moved, and they're not moving for several reasons, but one of them is that access score, so this is where we have a real problem. We're getting kids in eighteen, nineteen, twenty, second language learners. You know, they're going right into ninth grade classrooms because that's, we don't have a newcomer academy at the high school. And then these folks are like, well, they become our dropouts because they're like, why am I bothering going to school if I can go get a job? So we got to, we, we, we got a lot of work ahead of us, but I, I know that this is the number one thing for us right now.
If you're not putting eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-year-olds into ninth grade classes.
We're trying not to, but they're coded as ninth graders, meaning what happens is if they fail, let's say they fail ninth grade English, now they're twenty, they still don't have high, any high school credits. What's their hope?
Their hope is you're going to set that access program up at RPA. You can't have an eighteen or nineteen, twenty.
I think we're all on the same page about that.
I know.
So we're talking about doing something, the, what Brockton does is, it's called Edison Academy, it's a day evening school, it's night, but it's fully, it's, it's not like our night school. So the money comes from the state.
Yeah, but it's a whole separate school.
Yes and no, yeah, it's, but it's, it's at Brockton High.
Right, but they're listed on the DEC website, it's a separate academy like RPA is for us, okay? But I don't, I gotta stress enough, I don't think we're doing that, please.
Mr. Martins?
This money is, is used, supposed to be used exclusively for the Puerto Rican and Virgin Island students coming in.
No.
No.
No?
This was to reimburse.
Anything you wish?
It was to reimburse us and reimburse the district for costs associated with the students coming in.
Okay.
Which last, which we expended last year.
Oh, but that was to reimburse for, was, what was expended on the students?
Well, most of it was, well, yes, but most of it was operational dollars and transportation. And that, that was, that's where the uptick was and they said that we could spend this money in any way that we, that we need to in order to not only just deliver services, but to also fill gaps in our budget.
I'm going to be facetious. Can you spend the money on a roof?
Yeah.
You can?
Yeah, but within, only, I can't go above a certain figure on capital projects, but the answer is yes.
Okay. So you can buy lawn mowers, you can buy basically anything you want?
Yep.
I find that to be strange without having limits on what you can expend that money for. But if you want to increase the Durffys or improve upon the Durffys problem with the English language. English language learners, I certainly approve the department head. But what about the kids that are, and the most of them that we're talking about are 18, 19, 20-year-olds?
No, I was giving, no, I was giving an example that the large majority of our dropouts and our bottom 25% are overage and under accredited. And the problem is, and most of these newcomers are already in an age where it was like, oh my God, you're starting in ninth grade, but you're already 18. And they're quickly determining that, hey, if I can't speak English and I'm not progressing, what's the point of sitting in school? And that'd be, but then we get nailed for not moving the, the needle when they become dropouts. We've gotta do a better job of finding the model, and that's what we're gonna do.
So don't you feel that having additional help with those students, so that, hey, you might be dealing with five kids?
Yeah.
And getting them to be able to speak, read, and write-
Right.
-in English versus Spanish, and with Spanish, dual language learning?
So we need some, we need some, how do I say this, second required Spanish-speaking parish.
Okay, that's fine.
We need two of them.
Not only do you need, by the way, when is the department head gonna release the 2019 MCAS results?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? And I've been looking far back, and I go and use up to 2018, that's tomorrow. Great.
Tomorrow.
All right.
I'll tell you some secrets, but it's embargoed.
Okay, I understand what the embargo is. That's something that's been going on since MCAS first started back in about 20, uh, 20, uh, let's see, 2001?
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, somewhere around there?
No, actually, it was like 1996.
Okay, 1996, but then that was the trials back then.
Well, paper form was not, was, was 93, and then the test started in 96.
And it was embargoed for a long time each year until after the department head got to making their public announcements and whatnot, then they passed it on to the schools.
Maybe you could make a motion to go seek second language parish.
Well, you need, you need the parishes to help with, with this problem. It's not gonna go away because of you hired a English language learner department head.
That's right.
You need more people with those, you know, with those kids.
We got the tools to get it done.
I, I understand that.
Oh, I need your permission, Mr. Martin.
All right, in there. You, you're asking for, you know, what, what are you asking for? I see the, is that the contingency, 200,000, is that what you're asking for?
No, I'm asking you to make a motion to spend some of that 469 to hire some parishes.
Okay, I will certainly do that, to hire some parishes. Also, look at the, because that's what I'm waiting for, the department of ed results to come out. Because of the fact that some of the issues that you have sent to the school committee is that some schools have maintained their position and other schools, mm.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Doc.
Uh, yeah, but overall, though, the district is on target, which is, which is a plus.
Look, the purpose of those targets, to meet the targets, which you have to get at least 75%, right? In there, that whole purpose is to increase the MCAS results of the students. Everything that is done is to increase those, those MCAS results.
Uh, yeah, but remember how last year, it's, it's much more than just MCAS now, is what the accountability is, for there's other factors.
Accountability, English language learners, having a community, what the, the name escapes me, having parental contact, all of that. Everything that you're doing is fine, that's, but is it working to increase the student results? And the answer is no. It's not. So what are you gonna do differently?
We haven't seen the data yet, Mr. Martin.
Who's that?
We've never seen the data yet.
And when he does, that'll be a conversation piece with the committee.
Based on what you told us already, and I'm waiting for that data-
Tomorrow.
-to come in.
So, you'll be able to-
He'll be in your office tomorrow afternoon to review it.
I want you to come see me tomorrow, Mr. Martin, so we can go over this tomorrow. Listen, it would help me, Mr. Martin, you did mention one thing, though, that I would throw on the table with, because we have 496,000 there, that, that concept of the, one of the problems with the second language population is the community facilitator role, and Durfee doesn't have one of those.
Fine, and then I would make the motion to utilize those funds to increase the paraprofessionals that support that English language learning at Durfee.
And a community facilitator.
I'm sorry?
And a community facilitator.
Okay, and a community facilit, anything that will help those kids to go on, because the rating of Durfee is not acceptable.
If we put 100,000 in that line item, we could get a couple people, we'll go up-
Now, also, to have paraprofessionals in classrooms that are, are not, that do not have a paraprofessional in it. You have the gifted and talented program, and God bless them, they can learn well and should be pushed on as much as possible for them. But you're sitting in a classroom with 25, 26 kids, and lo and behold, if they're not getting the information, then something's gotta be done with it. And you need additional assistance in that classroom to do so. Am I, going on my soapbox, soapbox about paraprofessionals? Absolutely so, because of the fact that we're not-
I've never heard you talk about this.
I'm still waiting for the data.
Touche.
Okay. So, so we have a proposal that's before us, and I believe, Mr. Lieutenant, you're asking for a community facilitator for the high school and two paraprofessionals? You're asking us to expend?
About 100,000. Up to 100,000. And then, we have 200,000 in contingency to that, you may wanna hold on to that, because I know that in sped, that maybe your request, that I would come back to the committee, that we may need another teacher.
Well, I'll just say this, that this is one-time money, and I for one, I'll take your, your suggestions for a couple of these positions, but I don't know that I can support multiple positions, because then we're gonna-
Right.
-have to figure out how we're gonna fund them next year, commit those, create a cliff, things, cliff. And so if you're telling me we have an absolute need, that's fine, but we're up to one, two, three positions, and you're talking about, actually four positions, and you're talking about potentially out of contingency coming back and asking for additional sped positions, and-
If the numbers don't work out, that's all.
I, I, I understand that. I just, I'm reluctant, not that I'm reluctant to be supportive of positions that are needed, but the backlash to that is next year, how do we, how do we fit them in a budget?
Right.
So I'll just-
Then, you know, if the committee with the one-time funds, which you're actually right, there are other projects we could take on, and, you know, and this is where the committee gets to be able to say, hey, why don't you guys go do this, or?
Right. Mr. Almira?
Yes.
What do you have in your professional salary line?
Currently?
Is there an opportunity for these positions to be?
I can, I can cover the paraprofessionals, I could cover, community facilitator, I could cover. I don't believe I could cover the ELL department currently.
Okay. And I appreciate your candidacy. I mean, my, only my suggestion is cover those out of your, because it's already budgeted.
Okay.
I certainly will vote, if you ask for my support, I'd vote for the ELL department head at the high school outside of what we're able to.
Okay.
Because as you've mentioned, if it works, great, we'll find a way, next year's budget will, we'll have to take some, some hard, make some hard decisions, but I'm reluctant to start approving multiple FTEs out of one-time money for next year's budget, because I just think it's gonna pose a, a give and take down the road. It has to. We're only get, we're only get X amount of dollars, although if things shake out at the state level with, with this new funding plan, we may, this may be a conversation we don't need to have any longer, because we may be-
I think we're gonna have a good robust conversation when the budget season's pressed.
Right, so that would just be my, my position. Mr. Martin?
I know, and I agree with you about one-time funds, and if they disappear, we're in trouble. However, we're in trouble at the present time with what the MCAS results are, at least from 2018, that I have data on, in there. I don't think there's that much of an improvement for 2019 in there.
So what is the school committee going to do about it? So that's why I posed a question, Mr. Almira, about its professional salaries line, it's budgeted, niche budget. He's indicated he could probably do the community facilitator and a paraprofessionals, which I think is important, because now we're only being asked to, to take on the department head position with one-time money. And again, that's a position that if need be, we can revisit it next year's budget, or if, if it proves to not have the impact we wanted it to have, you know, then we don't, we don't renew it. Would that be an SNON?
That's an FRAA position.
All right, so be an FRAA position, so if we don't go forward to next year, we'd have to-
Well, we, we just have to eliminate it.
Right. Just for, for, for purposes of having this discussion.
Yeah.
So, anything further on the, on the request?
No.
Is there a motion to refer what's been recommended to the committee, finance committee, to refer to the full committee for expenditure, as outlined, minus those parishes and community facilitators, because that, you'll come back with another proposal out of operating money for those?
Sure.
On the senior night, though.
Yes, I'm saying, I'm saying, yeah, that's fine.
Some move, some move.
There's a motion by Mr. Coogan, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Martin. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Aaron Nun, roll call.
Mr. Coogan?
Yep.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. The last item is the discussion on the Durfee fieldhouse solar roof comparative analysis. Mr. Martin, this is a heads up on this one, too, for you. The last meeting, there was a proposal brought forward by Mr. Pacheco to go solar on the fieldhouse at Durfee. Came with a price tag, I believe, was it 90, over the cost of?
It's, it's, it's no cost to us.
The savings, no cost to us.
Right, right.
So why don't I do this, Mr. Pacheco's here, if you can just take maybe five or 10 minutes, just give, Mr. Martin, since you're here, I don't have to recap the whole thing.
Sure. So, Mr. Martin, as you know, we've got three buildings in the district that have power purchase agreements. Morton, I'm sorry, Morton, we own Talbot, CUS, and Sylvia. So on those buildings, we have solar panels that we do not own, we do not maintain. It's a 20-year lease that was provided to a company to put those solar panels on, and what we get for that is a set price per kilowatt hour, set price from a company to buy the electricity back. What we're looking to do on Durfee is exactly what we've done on those three schools. The difference between those two is that we own the solar panels at Morton, they were part of the MSBA project. MSBA no longer gets involved with solar panels on schools. It's, it's a decision they made at the upper level that, that they didn't wanna be involved in that piece. Schools could still do that work, but they would have to foot the full cost of the solar array. The proposal that I brought to the committee last meeting was basically to enter into a power purchase agreement for 20 years with a company called Select Energy. They were procured by a consortium of, by a consortium to do this work. So the procurement piece of this has already been finished, only for PPA, so only for non-owned systems. We don't have to go off of procurement, we can basically sign them up, or any other company that would have won this proposal. This company was the one that won the proposal, Select Energy. So they put a proposal together for us for 20 years that would give us 9,200 dollars a year in savings, as opposed to the grid. The grid proposal, which is about 13 cents, their proposal was about 11. At that meeting, the discussion became, do we purchase, like we did at, at Morton, or do we go with this PPA? And what I was asked to do is to put together something, this is unfortunately as in-depth as we could get in a short, in a short amount of time, but the, the gentleman, Matt Short sleeve from Select, put that pro forma together to show us basically what it would lay out to be in 20 years. So the system would cost us roughly 700,000 dollars upfront. That would be a, a city or school department cost to purchase the solar panels, mount them on, on the roof, and we would own them, we would maintain them. It would be our responsibility. At the end of the 20 years, we would have to decide what we were going to do with them, whether we remove them, whether we keep them on the roof at a, at a deteriorating rate, producing electricity. The cost, as I said, was 700,000 dollars, and according to the pro forma, we would not stop reaping any benefits of that. The first 10 years would be paying back the 700,000 dollars. So we would take 10 years of the 20-year life to pay back the purchase. From that point forward, we would start reaping the benefit of having the solar panels on the building. At the time, the conversation was had as to how we would do this, whether it would be bonding, or whether it would be from stabilization on the city side, or whatever. This, this basically lays out that, that piece with this company, but the one thing that it doesn't do is, is it doesn't tell us that we have to procure it, and we do. So this would be an RFP to solar companies to provide us with the equipment and the installation in order for us to do this. And then we would produce our own electricity backside of the meter and deduct off what we would pay the national grid for the balance.
Okay, but with, on a basis of, for 10 years, what is the estimated savings?
So the savings are built into the cost, so it's all once, you know what I'm saying? So the saving and paying alone, paying back your bond at the same time. So when you get to the 10th year, you now produce, you have no bill, you've already paid back the, the bond.
Okay, so no bill there, all right.
Right, and then from that point forward, it would be free and clear. So your electricity, whatever you produce, you'd be using at, at your full rate.
Do we have the capability of maintaining it?
If you're asking me that today, I'd say no. Absolutely not. I don't have anyone who has that expertise. I, we have never maintained solar panels as a district. We hire a company to, to give us inspection at Morton now, to do that work, but we do not have the expertise to do that. This was just to give us, this proposal is basically, so you can see the two sides of this, and as you can see in the email in the front, Mr. Short sleeve would come to the full committee meeting to explain what is in the pro forma and also beyond that. The, the company would, would, would be willing to work with us either way, however, if we're going to purchase, it is an RFP, so we wouldn't necessarily be working with this company at all. It would be whoever was the low bidder.
So we're not looking for any, any votes tonight on this? Take it home, take a look at it? Obviously, we wanted to get the analysis to members of the finance subcommittee to look at it. It can be discussed at a later date, both in finance and also, if maybe at the full committee, but I would encourage you to come back here for the subcommittee to take a look at and discuss it a little more. Maybe you could have, I don't think he's local, Mr. Short sleeve, is he local?
He could, he could-
I'd try to, he's out in Western Mass, right?
Right, Western Mass, but he would-
Maybe invite him to a, a future subcommittee, where we don't have such a robust agenda, and maybe he can walk us through the pro forma, both pros and cons, before it goes back to the full committee, you know?
I think if he does it for us, he's gonna do it for the full committee anyway. I mean, he could come back and do the same thing again, Martin, because I think everybody else is gonna have questions about this rule, so.
Right.
I mean, with one time and all- I mean, with one time and off, I think if he comes here and then we say come back to the full committee, I think they'll come and do it once.
Right, so, so maybe, maybe we can meet if there are questions that we have, can have him answer them and then schedule maybe for down the road a, a meeting where, you know, the full committee will take it back because we don't wanna interrupt the timeline that you have, um, so.
As I said at the committee meeting, Mr. Chairman, there was, um, we're preparing Durfee for solar. Whether we use it or not, it doesn't matter, it's part of the construction project, it's been part of the construction project since day one.
Right.
So the roof is equipped, the, the conduits will be there to accept any of the wiring that needs to be, uh, brought back into the building to tie into the grid. And the only thing that's not included is the, uh, the exchange, the, the switching mechanisms and the, and the, uh, the meter, so to speak, that this power would go through in order to, uh, to be rated. So, uh, that's the only thing that's, it's not gonna cost us time. We, I think we've already missed a, um, the lock in that, in that, uh, number eight, um, procurement on the state side, so, um, moving forward, it's not going to affect us if we need to take a little bit more time.
All right. Mr. Martin, do you have any questions at this time? No. All right, here and none? Thank you on that. Last order of business would be any new business, any topics for discussion could not reasonably be anticipated by the chair 48 hours prior to the meeting? Any new business? Here and none, motion to adjourn?
So move.
Made by Mr. Coogan, seconded by Mr. Martin, all in favor?
Right.
All opposed, so voted, meeting's adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.